Welcome to the Seal Beach Planning Commission Meeting of April 20, 2015. The meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Chairman Steve Sloan.
Here.
Vice Chair Esther Cummins.
Here.
Commissioner Deb Manchin.
Here.
Commissioner Patty Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Paul Pratt.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. By motion of the Planning Commission, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda, and provide an opportunity for any member of the Planning Commission or staff to request an item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight? If there are no objections, the agenda stands as presented. At this time, members of the public may address the Planning Commission regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the commission cannot discuss or take action on any item not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone, state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes each.
My name is Bill Ayers. Live on Central Avenue for many years here in Old Town. I don't know if you know it or not, but you guys opened a can of worms with your approval of a liquor license on Main Street at, I guess it's the New Woody's Restaurant, or whatever it's going to be called. I have a few questions for you. How many of you guys know how many liquor licenses are recommended by the ABC for the census tract? That's Old Town. Do you know the answer to that question?
It's a lot.
Can we respond to these questions?
I do, but I don't think we can respond.
I'm asking for an exact number.
I'm not sure we can respond.
My advice would be to let the speaker speak, and we can respond briefly afterwards.
Yeah, you're taking away part of my five minutes.
It'll be accounted for, sir.
Okay. Do you know how many liquor licenses are already issued in the census tract of Old Town Seal Beach? Do you know the answer to that question exactly?
Not exactly.
If you do not know the answer to these questions, you cannot legally vote on the matter that you voted on. Were proper notifications issued to the residents regarding this matter? If not, the entire matter should be stopped because the results could be challenged in court. I've talked to many residents, and they were not notified legally. Finally, how many of you commissioners live in the combat zone in the Old Town area? That's where the drunks wake you up at crazy hours and leave to get in their parked autos. They do not park on Main Street because they're not stupid. They're just drunk. For obvious reasons, a cop may be present, and they may be questioned for their ability to drive in that condition. And so it really affects by adding another liquor license. So we'd appreciate it if you would find out and get some definite answer to these questions before you proceed. Thank you.
My name is Gil Ayers. I live on Central Avenue. I've been in town for 41 years and been through a lot of trials and tribulations in this town, as Patty, you know very well. Anyway, we have confronted, as a group of Old Town residents, this liquor license problem before, and we were hoping that the problem had been just generally solved not to issue any more beer and wine or hard liquor licenses. But then slowly and slowly, we crept back, and a few beer and wine licenses were accepted, but no hard liquor was accepted until you folks did it. And I'm talking probably a period of 10 years. And it causes real problems here in Old Town. We've had drunks wake us up so many times walking back to their car. We've had drunks fall in our bushes and break them all. We've had drunks actually fistfight. We've had drunks, well, we didn't get up on that one, but I saw it the next morning. There was blood on the street, and we were pretty sure it was, you know, from Main Street because it stopped at the corner. Came this way and stopped at the corner. We are really concerned because our quality of life, not just ours, but our neighbors and everybody in Old Town is threatened with all these liquor licenses. I'm just wondering if anybody on the commission knows exactly how many liquor licenses there are in the Old Town area? This is beer and wine licenses, hard liquor licenses, and stores that sell liquor. It's absolutely astounding how many there are, and I counted them today, and there is a grand total of 38 for this small area. And I think it truly affects our quality of life. One of the things that I want to explain to you is when we went through this process about 10 years ago, and the people learned how many liquor licenses there were, the newspapers were talking about Watts. And Watts was realizing how that so many liquor licenses was affecting their area, and they had less than we did. So now we have even more. And it was in the papers, and I can see some of you shaking your head that you remember. And it's really not a good thing to have this many liquor licenses in such, I mean, we're going to be known as a party town. Come and have a good time. You don't need to come and eat your dinner because, you know, by nine o'clock, everybody's gone, but everybody's still at the bars, and they're drinking. So come on and have a good time. You don't have to spend any money except to buy your drinks. One more thing I would like to ask of you. I would like to see a process of putting a moratorium on liquor licenses put in place. I don't know how we go about that. I would believe that would be the Planning Director's thought. Maybe you could guide him. Maybe City Council has to do it. I'll be happy to speak in front of City Council again. It's nothing new. So the reason we didn't catch this problem at the beginning is because we had such a nice, quiet time, and we weren't monitoring everything. And so we do monitor, and we can start it again, the people of Old Town, and I'm sure they will, once they find out. A lot of other stores, restaurants on Main Street, don't have a hard liquor license, and that helps them bring in money. And I'm sure you're going to get more applications because of this can of worms that has just been opened. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Gil. Did you take your complaints to the council?
Excuse me?
Did you take these concerns to the council?
Not yet, because we just found out last week what happened. But next week is council, and I will take it there also.
I would suggest you do that. Mr. Attorney, is there any recourse for the Ayers to take on this?
With regard to this specific application at this time, the appeal period has passed. So that decision of the Planning Commission is final at this time. With regard to whether or not there are other changes that could be made to the zoning code, those are legislative changes that would affect not just this one business, but other businesses. Of course, you have the right and privilege to petition the council to hear your concerns and see if they would like to address this.
To what? I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. You have the right to petition the council to see if they would like to pursue other changes to the zoning code, the Main Street specific plan, that could address your concerns. But with regard to the specific application...
Does it have to be petitioned, or can you just ask?
Well, that petition and ask, same thing. Sorry. Fancy lawyer talk. I'll stop it.
Yeah, right. Okay, the next thing then that I want to know is, can you answer why we never received anything from the city telling us that this was going to go on?
I can't speak to whether or not you received a specific notice. I do know that in talking with staff, that the notices were, there was a list prepared based on the addresses that were within the required radius for mailing notices. The notices went out. Whether or not they were received, we can't speak to. We don't provide notice by certified mail. It was posted in the paper under the appropriate legal ad, and notices were sent out. And I'm sorry if you didn't receive it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I did slip up. I didn't see it in the paper. But I do know somebody else who said they didn't receive the notice. So I'm wondering how far the circle went. Did it go out far enough?
The notice range is 500 feet from the subject property.
Yes, we know. Yeah, we know. We think we're within 500 feet.
And I wouldn't doubt that. I just can't, once we send the mailing out, we can't guarantee delivery. We're required to put it in the...
I understand that, but there is a list of who is supposed to be on the list. Isn't that correct?
Mr. Bassin, can you address?
Mr. Chair, your property was on the list.
So we just didn't get it, and this other person that was on the list didn't get it?
I don't know about this other person, so I can't confirm or collaborate as to whether or not they received the mail.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Les Stark, and I live in Old Town here at 305 Central Avenue. I'm here this evening seeking guidance about how to appeal a decision, a recent decision by the city attorney directing planning staff, that my application for a conditional use permit cannot be considered by this commission. But before I get started, let me first say how much I appreciate working with both Crystal Lenda Vazo and Steve Fowler on our project. They've been straight shooters and always ready to help and answer the questions that I've got, and the same thing with my designer. They're really an asset to the city, and I very much appreciate their work. My wife and I, we're proposing to remodel and add a second story to our 998-square-foot home, single-family residence at 305 Central. When designing this project, our first priority was to maintain the character of the neighborhood by retaining as much of the original home, which was built in the '40s, to retain as much of the original home as possible. We have not reduced the size of the front yard, nor expanded both sides of the first and second stories in the front of the home. We didn't expand it to the minimum setbacks. Our hope has been that the sacrifice of usable space will ensure that our remodeled home fits in with the existing neighborhood and enhances its character and charm. Consistent with this objective, our plan also proposed retaining our existing garage, but expanding it to provide for a laundry room and a storage area, as well as adding a second story. In late 2014, planning staff, after presenting the plan to them, they concluded that our proposed location and the design of our garage does not comply with the development standards of the Seal Beach Municipal Code. Specifically, they concluded that to comply with these standards, we would have to increase the setback away from our alley's edge by four feet, for a total setback of nine feet. The garage is five feet from the alley's edge, and they want to move it in to be nine feet away from the alley's edge. However, we were told that if we wanted to keep the existing garage at its current location, we could file an application for a conditional use permit from the Planning Commission, this body. Now, I was surprised by this direction that I was given by planning staff, given that our project is a remodel, and it's not a tear-down and a rebuild. Nevertheless, based on the direction we received from staff, we filed an application for a CUP on January 30 of this year. As I'm sure you're all aware, pulling together all the documentation required for the CUP application is not a walk in the park. It's fairly detailed, requiring a trip to the Orange County Assessor's Office to prepare the 500-foot radius map, preparing mailing labels. I had to literally walk throughout the neighborhood gathering addresses for the purpose of mailing labels, and I prepared photographs at the side, prepared a four-page letter to the staff. It's also not cheap. I wrote a check for $1,294. Prepared to do that. But then, and this is back on January 30, then in a meeting with planning staff on April 13, it's two and a half months later, I was told that the city's attorney had advised staff, the planning staff, that the Planning Commission has no authority to consider my application for a conditional use permit, and they directed the planning staff to refund my $1,294 application fee. Now frankly, I'm surprised and disappointed that the city attorney is not allowing you, the members of the Planning Commission, to consider our proposal and to examine why strict application of the municipal code and its setback requirements are not appropriate in our case. Frankly, I think that's the purpose of a Planning Commission. Not every word in the municipal code is sacrosack. Judgment can be applied in certain circumstances, such as in my case. Now, time restrictions, I only have five minutes, don't allow me to get into the specific details of our case and why I think we're unique, and why the Planning Commission should be allowed to examine my case on its merits. But, you know, I'd like the opportunity to present them to the commission and have a hearing. Unfortunately, I'm not being given that opportunity, and so I'm asking tonight for your help and some direction. Can I appeal this decision by the city attorney, and how do I do this?
That's a good question. Are you finished?
I'm complete. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney, can you address this?
You know, I can't speak to the specific case because I don't recall them directly. I do know that there are, we're talking about a non-conforming property. Our code has some very detailed requirements when you're going to expand or redevelop a non-conforming property. If you're non-conforming as to certain aspects under the development code, you are not eligible for a CUP to redevelop property. Perhaps Crystal, who might know more about the specifics of the case, can speak to the case, but I would also advise the commission here to realize that this is not an agendized item, so this isn't an appropriate item for discussion here tonight. But we can give some feedback to you. I can assure you that, you know, I don't take the decision to say that somebody's not eligible for a CUP lightly. If there are specific circumstances of the property that make it unique, that make the application of the zoning code requirements particularly burdens them, and there's some unique aspects of the property, there is a variance route. Not all properties are eligible for variance, but the code in this respect, with regard to non-conforming residential properties, for historical reasons, has some very confined limitations on which properties which are non-conforming can be redeveloped extensively. So, Crystal, I don't know if you can add anything else?
Well, just an overview again. The nonconformity is primarily due to, the nonconformity primarily is due to the rear yard setback, and as the city attorney mentioned, and not to get too much into detail, because again, it's not agendized tonight, but the zoning code, the way it specifically reads and the way that we have to follow it, is that if you're nonconforming due to building height or side yard setbacks, you are eligible for applying for a conditional use permit and leaving the decision up to the Planning Commission. But if you are nonconforming due to a rear yard setback, that is not something that is allowed in the code. So our nonconforming section, and it comes up constantly, especially throughout the Old Town area, it's very finite and very specific. And I know when the nonconforming chapter was initially revised in 2004, and any minor revisions that have happened since then have been very specific. So we do tend to find ourselves with our hands tied from time to time, given the real-life application of it and what the interpretation of the code would be. And that is sort of what happened with this particular case.
And if I might just add, this is not to say that the property can't be remodeled or redeveloped. It does mean, however, that in order to do so, if I'm remembering the code correctly, the property must be brought into compliance with regard to the rear yard setback, which is 20, is it?
24 feet minus the width of the alley.
Minus the width of the alley. So they're credited for the width of the alley, but then typically they have to go nine feet back from the alley. So...
All right. It's a good people...
And the concern here, though, is the reason you have 20...
Would it be worthwhile?
Excuse us, sir.
Go ahead.
The reason you have the nine-foot setback is to provide a turning radius so your cars can get in and out of your garage. Makes absolute sense. But in my particular case, I'm taking my garage, going to widen it. I'm going to only have a two-car garage door, but a third of that garage is going to be a wall. I don't need to park a car there. So having a nine-foot setback is not really with the spirit of what that requirement is. And that's why a Planning Commission takes a step back and says, you know what, we're not going to apply in this case because we're going to treat our citizens reasonably to develop their properties to the maximum allowed by the law. And that's all I'm asking for, is an opportunity to have a hearing.
I appreciate your frustration, and I think I understand where you're coming from. Would it be worthwhile for Mr. Stark and the staff to try to work together on this a little bit more, to see what can be done, or are we at an impasse here?
I think staff would be happy to see what other options are available.
Well, we've been working, okay? And I think it got to the point where, I don't know your name, sir, I apologize, but the city attorney was basically saying, you know what, I mean, the planning staff had made a lot of progress. We were going to be here tonight, I think, to present their recommendation. As I understand it, I think the city attorney looked at this and said, you know what, really, you guys don't have the authority to review it, so stop. So we're, I think the staff's at a full stop right now, and I need to appeal it. And I'm not sure exactly how to appeal, whether it goes to you, or whether they go to council, or any other avenue. So that's why I was here tonight.
Can I ask a question? Are you putting a second story on this garage?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I know we had one case, this was years back, where people wanted to put a second story on, and the second story adhered to all the setbacks. In other words, the first floor was nonconforming because the side setbacks were not what was required, because the house was built before they had those ordinances. But the second story was built to conform. Now, if that's the case, if your second story conforms to the current code, precedent's been set for that.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add this, maybe we should dispense of further discussion, but the nonconforming section is, as staff indicated, is very stringent. There are some ramifications whereby you're permitted to expand, but absolutely, there is a minimum setback for which you're required to provide. In the case of the rear yard setback, no minimum setback was established other than having a nine-foot setback. So there are some areas of the development standards that are allowed for which you can expand, under the example you cited, and other examples for which is presented as a proposal doesn't meet the nonconforming chapter section.
What if the second story is conforming? Can it be built that way?
Again...
I'm not sure we need to work this here tonight.
That would be my recommendation, is that you allow...
We're not familiar with the situation.
Talk with the property owner, and see if we can come up with some other options for him to develop.
And that's what I would suggest. I would suggest you work with staff some more. Hopefully, you can resolve this and get a conditional use permit before us.
Okay.
If not, you're welcome to come back and try again.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to say something tonight? Seeing no one, we will close oral communication. There is one item on the consent calendar tonight, and that is the approval of Planning Commission meeting minutes of April 6, 2015.
Mr. Chairman, if I might suggest one brief amendment to those minutes. The minutes regarding consideration of CUP 15-2 do accurately reflect, to my recollection, Commissioner Manchin indicating that she had a potential conflict of interest and that she recused herself and left the council chambers. They do not reflect that she returned. And my recollection is that she returned at the conclusion of that item before consideration of CUP 15-1. So my recommendation would be at the end of item two, the minutes additionally note that Commissioner Manchin then returned to the council chamber following approval of CUP 15-2.
It does, however, show that she voted on the third item.
It does. I would just like to note that she was here for the public hearing.
All right. That's fine by me.
I have another correction. It states that Commissioner Manchin indicated that as a result of a leasehold interest in the property at which her business is located, she has a conflict of interest. That is not the case. That's incorrect. So I would like the record to show that I did not state that, and that I do not have a leasehold interest in the property at which my business is located, but that I rent on a month-to-month basis.
Point of clarification from me, Commissioner Manchin, that was what was stated on the minutes there. We did have a conversation afterwards, after the meeting, in which you clarified that it was a month-to-month interest, and I will...
I think you mentioned it, but I did not, and I don't...
No, we didn't know it at the time, but in terms of noting what the minutes record, that's a different, you can, I would welcome you to state on the record of tonight's meeting that that is the case.
Which is what I'm trying to do.
Okay. But in terms of altering the minutes of this meeting, I would advise you that unless this is an inaccurate statement of what happened at that meeting, that the minutes should reflect what happened at that meeting. You can correct the apprehension of...
I would like to amend, so that the records reflect that I do not have a leasehold interest, and this is quite important at this moment.
Well, my recommendation to you then would be, it's not a matter of correcting the minutes, it's a matter of setting the record straight. So if you would like the record of this meeting to reflect that these minutes reflected your understanding at the time, but we subsequently determined that you did not have a conflict of interest, that you state that on the record of this current meeting that we're having right now, because we did not state that on the record of that meeting.
And I thought I just did that, so you can help me.
Okay. I think we have that for the record. They'll appear on the minutes of this meeting, that you clarified, that you subsequently determined, with my advice, that you did not have a conflict of interest, and that you had recused yourself as a matter of prudence, just in case.
I want to specifically have it on the record that I do not have a leasehold interest, because that is important as far as the FBPC is concerned.
And that can be reflected in the minutes of this meeting that we're having tonight.
So the statement here, that Commissioner Manchin indicated that as a result of a leasehold interest is indeed what she said in the meeting?
Correct.
I did not.
And that is accurately recorded?
Stephen said it.
I, based on my understanding at the time, there was a leasehold interest. Now, you have a month-to-month lease, but that is not a leasehold interest that gives rise to a conflict of interest under the Political Reform Act, but I was not aware of the fact at the time.
Right.
So I was trying to assist Commissioner Manchin in disclosing the interest that was leading her to prudently abstain from that part of the meeting.
What did you indicate in the meeting? Do you recall?
That I had a conflict of interest because I rented at that location.
Can we not change this to say what she stated at the meeting?
Yes, you may.
Okay, so we are going to, once again...
That's true. It says Commissioner Manchin indicated, and I did not. So it would be fair to be able to say what I said, which was that I have a conflict of interest because I have, I rent.
As a result of renting in the, within 500 feet?
In the property at which my business is located.
So, Mr. Attorney, would that be all right then?
I guess my, what I'm hearing is that you'd like to amend the minutes to say Commissioner Manchin indicated that as a result of renting the property at which her business is located, she has a conflict of interest pertaining to this item, therefore recused herself and left the council chambers. I would indicate then that the city attorney...
Elaborated by stating...
Further stated that the interest is a lease interest, and therefore in her business location.
Is that all right with you?
And then, I'd like the record of this meeting to reflect that it is not...
That will appear in the minutes of this...
Certainly will.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry for all...
No, no, I know, it gets confusing when you want to correct something that was inaccurately stated previously. We have to make sure the minutes reflect what accurately was said at the meeting. You are always, all of the commissioners are free to come back at a later meeting and clarify or correct remarks that were stated previously. But in terms of having an accurate record of the meeting that was already in the book, so to speak, we got to make sure that we're accurate as to what was in there. You're always free to correct something that came later, but just not in the minutes themselves.
So if it was stated, the minutes reflect something that didn't happen? It's got to stand?
If the minutes, that's not the case here. The minutes, as we've been working through them, now reflect what actually happened, if that's the consensus of the commission.
I think everybody's happy with these modifications now.
But there were things, what Commissioner Manchin is looking to correct for the record is that she did not, in the end, we determined, have a conflict of interest. We determined after the fact that she probably did not need to recuse herself, and she wanted to clarify that so that people understood that although she had recused herself, she later determined that she did not have a conflict of interest. So this also goes to the prudence of letting staff and council know if you think you might have a conflict of interest as early as possible, because if we don't get enough lead time, it's hard to always analyze it to the nth degree, that we need to clearly participate. So in this case, I would say that... So, in this case, I would say that Commissioner Manchin did the correct thing in recusing herself, just to avoid any chance that she might have participated.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah, so, I don't... I understand where Commissioner Manchin's coming from.
I was also recommended by the FPPC to do so, because I hadn't gotten a clear answer, which takes 21 days.
So, the more time we have, the more clear resolution of the question we can get, and dig down in, and get you a better answer. But if we don't get enough time, it's usually more prudent to recuse yourself, as Commissioner Manchin did in this case, just to be safe. So, the minutes will reflect, if the commissioner approves them, what actually happened. The minutes for the next meeting will include a summary of this conversation, including the clarification that we subsequently determined that Commissioner Manchin did not have a conflict of interest.
Is there any other issues with this?
Can I move that we vote on the minutes as amended?
Do we have a second?
I second.
The vote is five in favor, and the minutes are approved. The consent calendar is approved. There's one public hearing item that we have tonight, and that is Minor Use Permit 15-1. May we have the staff report, please?
Good evening. Applicants Robert and Karen Bowler submitted an application for Minor Use Permit 15-1 to allow the relocation of a front door, a new front porch, and a change in roof style at a nonconforming residence located in residential high-density Zone 20. The subject site located is located on the northeast corner of 17th Street and Landing Avenue. The parcel is developed with a two-story residence with an attached single-car garage at the front, and with a second dwelling unit on top of a two-car garage at the rear. The subject site is surrounded by residential uses to the north, south, and west, with light commercial and residential to the east. The subject site is nonconforming due to density, parking, and setback. The Seal Beach Municipal Code requires a lot size of 4,356 square feet and four off-street parking spaces for two residential units. This property has only a lot size of 3,750 square feet and three parking spaces. Additionally, the required setbacks are 3 feet 9 inches for the interior side and 5 feet 8 inches for the corner side. The property has only a 3-feet interior and 5-feet corner setback. The applicant is proposing to remodel the front residence by replacing the flat roof and parapet wall with a gable roof. The remodel will also include an unenclosed covered porch and entry to face 17th Street. The Seal Beach Municipal Code allows for minor improvements for unenclosed porches, balconies, roof additions, and exterior doors to nonconforming residential structures with approval of a minor use permit. The proposed structure lies within the parameters set by the Seal Beach Municipal Code and complies with development standards for residential high-density zoning area. No additional habitable space will be created. After conducting the public hearing, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the attached resolution as conditioned. Staff and the applicants are available to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions at staff? Could you put up the elevation, the south elevation of the proposed... It looks like the roof line has been raised on this over the existing roof line. Is that correct?
I do not believe so. The proposed roof line, the actual height will be 23 feet 7 inches, which falls underneath the 25-feet height max limit.
You'll be given an opportunity in a second. None of the modifications will affect the current three-foot setback or the current five-foot corner side setback. Is that correct?
The proposed porch will maintain a 6-feet interior side setback, and maintain an 8-inch front setback, which complies with the development standards.
Okay. So, it doesn't affect the noncompliance setbacks that currently exist?
No, it wouldn't be a continuation of the nonconforming situation.
That's all I had. The applicant, would you like to make a comment? Come to the podium, please, and...
Good evening. I'm Bob Bowler, and my wife Karen is here. One of my neighbors, Walter, I know, is here. The only comment I wanted to make was that the height of the box that you saw, the flat roof, is the exact height that the new ridge would be, to the inch. So, we're not... When you asked the question, were we raising the height? We were. We were under the 25, and not only that, we were at the exact height. Instead of being square, it will look more... It'll look nicer.
I don't mind that it would be raised, just as long as within limits of the code.
Yeah, that was one of the things that I caught, that it was the exact size, so we're not going up even. I guess we could have gone to the 25, but we're not, so...
Okay, thank you.
That's it. Thank you for your time.
Looks very pretty.
One question here.
Come back.
Mr. Bowler?
When I went by today, the whole front of the house... Well, it's all torn off.
The siding I took off and put plastic over in case we get rain. So, I didn't... I'm ready to go, but not there yet. But yeah, it's one fortunate... Deb, or Manchin?
Yeah, it's fine.
She came by, and I was able to show her where we were at, which was nice. She introduced herself, we showed her where we're at. But I just did put plastics over, because they say it's going to rain, but I'm not convinced. But I don't want to take a chance, because it's exposed.
Did you find much dry rot, or any problem in there?
No, I didn't. And the house is 102 years old, and all the studs and everything looked fantastic, so I was very excited under that wood.
A redwood.
You are so lucky.
I was ecstatic.
Probably.
This change is going to be so much more attractive, because now the front door is kind of hidden. You can't even see it.
Yeah, the actual front door went on my neighbor's side, and it went into the block wall, and now we'll actually have a front facing 17th.
Have a real front door.
It's not only conforming, I think you're enhancing the neighborhood.
Thank you. We think so.
Can I ask what the slope of the roof is?
It's 6 and 1/2 to 12 for the roof replacement.
So, we're okay?
Yeah.
We're very conscious of that in leisure world, because we're 3/4 of an inch off.
Okay.
We're not slopy enough to use shingles legally.
Yeah, and I think we...
Major problem.
We determined the 6 and 1/2, 12, just by the little portion that did go up to the flat portion, so we just want to continue that.
Any other questions, Mr. Bowler? Thank you.
Thank you again for your time.
Good luck.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this matter?
Hi, my name is Walt Turner. I'm a resident at 326 17th Street, the same street. Been there for over 30 years. The home that they purchased about two years ago should have been a tear-down. It was terrible. It was an owner-absentee landlord kind of thing. The place was trashed. The landscaping, the paint, everything. Talked to several people in the neighborhood, and we wish it would have been a tear-down, until Bob and Karen moved in. What they've done in terms of landscaping and painting, none of which requires a permit, has been awesome. It has improved the quality of the neighborhood. It has improved the quality of the city. It has improved the quality of land values, okay? I don't quite understand why they have to go through this kind of a process to continue to improve the quality of the property. Makes no sense. Anyway, they're doing a great job. They're doing it at their expense, not at yours, and everybody in the neighborhood is very, very much in favor of what they're doing. Question?
If I may comment, everything in Old Town, not everything, but pretty much everything in Old Town, is what they call legally nonconforming. Now, if you had this house up in College Park East, and you wanted to do what you're doing, no problem. Just simply pull a permit, because everything in College Park East is legally conforming, meaning we have all the setbacks, front, back, side, front. Everything is legally nonconforming. Down here, nothing is legally conforming. So, when you want to do something, even a small project like this, you have to go to the city and lay it out. 95% of the stuff that we look at is all Old Town.
You're talking about legally conforming. You know, that's a wonderful phrase, and I appreciate it. Having been in law enforcement for 40 years, I understand exactly what you're saying. However, there's a good of the community involved also. This community was built in what? The 1920s, 1930s? People moved here from Nebraska, and they shipped tents. They lived in tents. Talk to me about legally conforming tent?
No, the houses that were built, they're all over the place as far as setbacks are concerned.
It's part of the character of the neighborhood. That's part of the character of Seal Beach. That's why I love it here.
That may be part of the character, but when a city organizes, they have to do certain things to make sure that we keep the character. There's a lot of hard work that goes into keeping this city, the wonderful community that we came here for. And if we didn't have all these ordinances, there would be people that would abuse it. And as a planning commissioner told me years ago, if we're not careful, Old Town will become one big box, and we don't want to see that happen.
Okay. I think I'm speaking for the residents on 17th Street, who are very much in favor of what Bob and Karen have already done.
It's beautiful.
And very much in favor of anything that they want to do, based on their history of two years of absolutely wonderful job.
That's great.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Turner.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Okay.
Does the commission have any comments they'd like to make?
Comments? Oh, we're going to vote on this? Oh, excuse me.
As soon as someone offers a motion, we will.
The hearing is still open, if you'd like to close it?
I'm sorry. We'll close public testimony on this issue if there are no objections.
I move to approve the item before us, 15-1.
I'll second that.
The vote is five in favor. The motion passes, and the permit is approved. Good luck with your remodel.
Approval of Minor Use Permit 15-1 is a final decision of the planning commission. There's a 10-day period to appeal this decision. The appeal period begins tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Mr. Director, do you have a report tonight?
No, I don't, Mr. Chairman.
Does the commission have any concerns they want to share?
I do. I'd like to comment on what Bill Ayers said. I guess I'm the one here who has the history, because years ago, when the CUP process first started, all the liquor licenses had to come through the planning commission, and they just approved a whole bunch of them left and right, so much so that the folks in Old Town really got up in arms about it. And the process slowed down. And the comment was made then, and I made this comment at the last meeting, that somebody did note the number that we had on Main Street, and the number per square mile was greater than what you find up in LA. And yeah, they were concerned that too many can ruin the neighborhood. But this particular license that we discussed last week was an upgrade. It's not a new license. It was an upgrade from beer and wine to liquor, so that they could serve margaritas. So, it's not like we added a whole new license for a whole new establishment. This was an upgrade. We have not added another establishment. We've just upgraded the existing one. So, that's why I didn't have a problem with that.
Commissioner Pratt?
I'd like to concur with Commissioner Campbell, and also, one of the ladies used the term drunks. Drunks don't buy liquor at a restaurant, if they go to a liquor store or someplace like that. And if they have a problem, I don't know that one more restaurant is going to add or subtract from their problem. I have been in the restaurant in Huntington Beach that is going to be taking Woody's place, and I think we will be proud of what they bring to the city. And again, it's probably primarily for margaritas and a few drinks like that, but I don't see any problem, and I think we should wait and see. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Commissioner Cummings? Commissioner Manchin? And I don't have anything either, so with that, we will adjourn this meeting and reconvene. Our next scheduled date is May 4.
May 4. A great day.